So liquor control, first thing would be to adopt the agenda. Doug Bailey, I didn't say that. Doug Bailey, it didn't take me long to forget that.
Cecil Renish Smith, Vice Chair, and I move to adopt the agenda.
Jeff Halen, I moved, or I will second that.
Motion in a second?
Every time?
I think so.
Doug Bailey, motion in a second.
It goes on the short meetings.
On the agenda.
And then select board.
All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you. Doug Bailey again, approve liquor license renewals. No, liquor control commissioners minutes from May 26th.
Cecil Renish Smith, Vice Chair, I move to accept the liquor control commissioner minutes from May 26, 2025.
Jeff Halen seconds.
Doug Bailey, motion in a second on the minutes. All in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Just talking in third person.
Mr. Chair, this is Seth Hopkins. So I'll just tell you what will happen. Okay, if you say your name, it will say Doug Bailey did this or that.
Okay.
If you don't say your name, what will happen is I'm gonna end up presenting at the top of the minutes that gets submitted to you, a list of motions and outcomes. But the discussion that the minutes taker will take won't reflect who said what. It will just say there was talk about this and that. So if that's comfortable for everybody, that's cool. Because the recording will still capture who said what, if somebody really wants to find out who said what. The content of the discussion will be captured without us announcing names. And there'll be like a little block at the top of the minutes that has like the important results.
So.
This is fun.
Okay, this is Doug Bailey, and we do have a motion in a second on the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let that show it was unanimous. Doug Bailey still, approval of the liquor license renewals.
Brian Coolidge will make a motion to approve those.
Cecil Renish Smith, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, Doug Bailey says. To approve liquor license renewal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no one. Doug Bailey still, approve special events catering permit.
Cecil Renish Smith, Vice Chair, I move that we approve the special event catering permits for Red Clover Ale Company's Beer Garden Event.
Second. Doug Bailey, we have a motion in a second for Red Clover Ale Special Event, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes, unanimous. Doug Bailey still, public comment and participation. I don't think any of this is probably the best way to make sure if nobody talks. Okay, no public comment. Item six.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye, Brian Coolidge.
Yes.
Jeff Halen seconds.
If we must.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no one.
I have a suggestion.
What's your name?
Okay, I'm the only woman that can figure it out. Now, my suggestion is that the only time we actually really need to do it is when someone is making a motion and seconding the motion, so we know who made the motion and who seconded it.
I think that would be a lot of.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, now we are into sort commissioners meeting. First is to adopt our agenda.
Jeff Halen moves that we adopt the agenda of the previous meeting, or of this meeting.
Second, Cecil Renish Smith.
Motion in a second on the agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Reoccurring matters, sewer commissioners minutes from May 26th.
Cecil Renish Smith, I move that we approve the sewer commissioners minutes from May 26, 2025.
Brian Coolidge, I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor of approval of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Item three, consider purchase orders, four of them, five of them. Would you like to talk about those?
Seth Hopkins, Mr. Chair, so these are the purchase orders that the staff at the wastewater department, who two, two of the three of them are here tonight, our chief wastewater treatment system operator, Tim Kingston, and the assistant chief operator, Ian Buckley. And they've presented the purchase orders in a very similar way to the way that you're used to seeing them from our retired chief operator, Steve Chika. There's the price and there's some historical information for them so that you can get an idea of what the trend is for various things. So you could ask questions of them if you have specific questions about any of the components of the process. In general, I think that the quotes that came in were very attractive and it's not disruptive to the budget that you're going to be looking at after you take care of the purchase orders.
Pleasure to the board. In other words, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I will. Brian Coolidge will make a motion to approve all five of those.
Cecil Renish Smith, I will second that motion.
In general, it did not go up and in fact, one of them gone down, so maybe more than one. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the purchase orders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no one. Public comment on sewer. Mr. Bueller.
Yes. Brent Bueller. Okay, I've, what I'm gonna say, I've said to you as the select board, but now you're the sewer commission. So I'm gonna repeat to you what I've said. In the past regarding the Shirley Farr Fund. While you do not want to involve yourself in the fund as the select board, as the sewer commissioners, it seems it is your duty to do so since you manage the sewer expenses of Brandon. And given the primary purpose of the fund is for the Brandon sewer and sanitation needs. I'm not saying that some of what the funds have been used for haven't been good for the community. And this is not about what I want, it is about what Shirley Farr wanted when she put her signature to her last will and testament. I know many folks feel that $30,000 to $40,000 spent each year from the fund is insignificant to the town sewer expenses. It is my understanding that the monies were initially used for a sewer project. And it wasn't until later that it was put into a trust fund, which then required trustees. It seems that once that occurred, its mission was no longer primarily sewer and sanitation as. Article C four of the Vermont statute of public funds states, if the municipality has adopted an investment policy, the trustees shall invest in accordance with the provisions of the municipal policy that do not conflict with this sector. This provision appears to provide the town with an opportunity for some type for the use of the funds under the management of the trustees. I applaud the town manager Seth Hopkins for his efforts in reforming the uses of the fund. And given your roles on the sewer commission, I feel it is your obligation to have at least one member attend all trustee public funds meetings to make sure that of Shirley Farr, that they are first doing sanitation. While limited, $30,000 to $40,000 a year could certainly be used for parks and towns events such as Fourth of July or for sewer lines or as a revolving loan fund. I fund these folks experiencing septic or well repairs or unless reforms are made to the fund, given the history in not honoring the purpose of Ms. Farr's bequest, I can't imagine why anyone in their right mind need money to Brandon. Honoring to the letter Shirley Farr's wishes is the right, moral, ethical, and legal thing to do. As I imagine all of us here expect when we sign our last will and testament. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. I need to back up though because we did not do item four, the wastewater.
Right.
Fun budget. Did we? Oh. That would be the next thing. Do we have a motion on the budget first and then some questions? I'll make a motion that we approve this budget so that we can get into discussing it.
Jeff Halen second.
Pardon?
Jeff Halen second.
Okay, Seth, my question is why do, why do we budget such a deficit?
So essentially, this budget operates in a much more close to normal manner than the town's government accounting budget. This is much more like a business. So in this one, as you know, with businesses, there are some expenses that you'll take that will recognize a loss in value like depreciation. But it doesn't actually affect your cash flow. So if we were to try to make this budget perfectly balanced that way, we would end up with an excess of cash flow, which would mean our sewer rates would be higher than they need to be to actually fund expenses. The town's traditional way of funding big improvements has been bonding. Not, not in, not taking an advance extra from rate payers and accumulating a large cash balance to spend down for replacing equipment when it becomes necessary. But basically running at a break even point for cash flow that allows the most affordable sewer rate we can. And when it becomes necessary to replace equipment, we then bond for it and incorporate that into the wastewater rate structure so that the people who are basically benefiting from the use of the new equipment will be the rate payers whose rates are paying for it. It won't be prepaid. There's a particular couple of lines toward the end, the second from the bottom line. Well, so the bottom line was depreciation, that's $200,000. That's a big chunk of the imbalance. And then the next one is short-lived asset, the next one up USDA short-lived asset. So the USDA has given us some best practice guidance and a lot of that was related we had to take that guidance basically as a condition of the funding that we get from USDA. And so what happens there is when small equipment breaks or needs to be replaced or reaches the end of its useful life or whatever, that amount of money is, that is used as a sinking fund. For, this would be stuff much smaller than like the every 20 years generational upgrade to the plant. This would be like a pump and we are able to just replace a pump at a pump station out of the short-lived asset fund. So those two things together are about $400,000. And the out of balance is about $500,000 and the difference essentially is going to be taken from fund balance that's on hand that the town treasurer says is at a healthy enough point that we should be using it and not asking more of the rate payers.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Does. You have a motion, second, and an explanation. All in favor of approval of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Record shows everyone. Now, is there any more public comment? I thought you were putting your hand up. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sort.
Second, Cecil Renish Smith, seconding.
All in favor of adjournment of the sewer, say aye.
Aye.
Select Board. Doug Bailey, looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Cecil Renish Smith, I move to adopt the agenda as, oh. No, I move to amend the agenda, sorry. I would like to amend the agenda to add an item to authorize payment of the extension to the West Seminary sidewalk work. And put it under recurring matters under the warrant.
Jeff Halen seconds.
All in favor of adoption of the agenda with the change, please say aye.
Aye.
Select Board remarks. I don't think I should say any remarks today because this is getting into a humor show, is it? So.
All right.
Going on. No remarks. Um, hmm, reoccurring matters.
Can you hear me now, Vicki?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, first would be to approve the select board minutes from June 9th.
Still doing our name thing.
Yes, I guess we are, sorry for the motion.
Brian Coolidge, make a motion to approve the select board minutes of June 9th.
Ralph Eathier, second.
This is Cecil Renish Smith, I have a couple of proposed amendments to the minutes. First, item seven, financial management questionnaire. Where it states Doug Bailey stated this questionnaire has to be completed every year and the select board has to approve it each year. It then says Cecil Renish Smith noted she reviewed it and it is accurate. That was actually Doug Bailey who made that remark. Also, just for clarification on I lost the page. Where we, under blackboard three, it's actually where we make the appointments for the trustees of public funds. It states Cecil Renish Smith stated there would be one year, two year, and three year term, after which those running for election in March would be applying for a three-year term. That's not very clear. I just wanted to make clear that as the elections come, that person who is up for that election will be running for a three-year term. If that makes sense, they are not all three going to run in March for a three-year term.
Right, but Seth Hopkins. But they will all three be running in March for something.
For a one year or two.
Whether a year of a three-year term, two years of a three-year term, or a three-year term.
Correct.
Motion in a second on the minutes, all in favor of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Warrant.
Cecil Renish Smith, I move to approve the warrant in the amount of $196,041.30. I would note that of that, $129,225 is for the slate for the roof of Town Hall.
Do we have a second?
Jeff Halen, second.
Discussion. I had one question, Mr. Hopkins, it's Mr. Bailey speaking, and that was just up on page four. New England Municipal for Lisa for $11,210. That was the only one that I questioned what that was.
Okay, right, so this is the town's professional property assessor. And that bill, so we don't pay her as an employee, we pay a contract fee to Nemrick, who is the company that she works for, and that fee covered the work that she did in Brandon from the first of the year until the end of May. So that's about, it's almost a half a year's time, five months' time.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? None heard. All in favor of approval of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Close no one. And item three C is the approval of the extended money spent on the sidewalk going up Seminary, Seminary Hill.
Right, Cecil Renish Smith, I move that we approve the warrant for $74,000 to Vermont Road Works for the sidewalk paving on West Seminary Street, and that's per the contract and including the extension from
Nashaby.
Nashaby House to number 52, number 52. And I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to use that new sidewalk. It is so much better than the old sidewalk. And where it ends now, the pavement that goes from where it ends up to Walnut Street is fine. It wasn't really in disrepair, but from 52 down, it could, needed work and we got it done.
So you made a motion.
I did.
There was a motion in there. Is there a second in there?
There was a motion in there.
I'll second. Brian Coolidge, I'll second that.
Okay, for discussion, would you explain where those funds came from?
Seth Hopkins, I would like to, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. So what, last year, the select board had allocated $175,000 from the ARPA award to do sidewalk work in Brandon. And that was done at a cost of $131,498. So there was some additional money available. We, actually it was Bill spoke with, Bill and Jeremy, I think, both spoke with Fred, who was the contractor who was doing the work. And they agreed that we could add on some, I checked with the select board, if you remember. I said, do you want to put the money back in reserves or do you want to do more sidewalk? And they said, do more sidewalk. So the select board said, do more sidewalk. It's, it's been a concern of the community. So then it was decided to go ahead and do the worst part of West Seminary Street, which was from the Nashaby House down to where the concrete sidewalk starts, basically at the end of the park opposite the high school. So they came this spring to do that, and while they were here, they observed the condition of the sidewalk uphill from there toward Walnut Street. And they made a suggestion that since they were already here and the work was going well and the weather was cooperating, they would be able to do the additional work. So the, the amount that they were coming back to do, that was like a bonus from the 2024 work was 650 feet of sidewalk. And that was going to use, that required $49,000 of the amount that wasn't used from last year's ARPA. So that worked out to be about $75 per sidewalk foot. So there was a tiny bit of ARPA left. They made the proposal to do another 500 feet up the hill toward Walnut Street. And that amount will need to come from the 1% fund, which will have $300,000 in it after this amount. So this will be 500 feet of sidewalk for 25,000, which works out to $50 per sidewalk foot. So we did get, I think, a very nice price because they were already here and already doing the work and things were going well and they wanted to kind of make good use of their time. So taking that 25,000, using the 2,0658 that was still left over from the ARPA means that we would need 22,342 to be covered by the 1% fund. So in other words, there's no highway budget money, there's no property tax money. It's either ARPA money or local option tax money.
Was there not a little money left over from the town farm road paving bid? Or did you say that in there when you just explained that that came lower?
Right, that was the original plan. So the town farm road was later in this meeting. That bid came in around $12,000 under what was forecast. So the board can decide if you want to, that, that was actually already going to be coming from the 1% fund. So, right, if you reallocate that, then instead of looking at 22 additional $1,000, it would be more like 10.
Right.
Apologies, you're right, you're absolutely right.
That's the way most of us looked at it, because the town farm bid came in lower than anticipated. And that meant we didn't have to get 1% money very much.
Right. Thank you for that reminder.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have an explanation. Any other remarks, questions? All in favor of approval of that, say aye.
Aye.
Close no one. Okay. Onto item four, town manager's report.
This is Seth Hopkins. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I submitted my report. I do want to highlight a couple of vacancies on town boards. We want to thank Eve Beglarian for being on the energy committee for quite some time. She's resigned from the committee, so the energy committee has a vacancy. Their usual meeting is the first Monday of the month at 4:30 PM. There's also a longstanding vacancy for an alternate on the development review board. Their usual meeting is the fourth Thursday at 7:00 PM. And to highlight a couple of things from my report, the roof work is going well here at the Town Hall. As we've talked about the sidewalk, we don't have to talk anymore about that. There was some work done by our highway department and our wastewater department to alleviate a chronic drainage issue down near the Carver Street Pump Station. And we will see how that goes, but that was, I think, done in a way that should solve the problem. Tax sale list is down to just 21 property owners. And then in staffing, we have some good news to report. Today was the first day for Mr. Bob Laporte at the Highway Department, and we're glad to have him on the Highway Department with Jeremy, Brian, and Kyle. So we're at full authorized strength there. And today was the first day in Brandon for Officer Michaela Fontana in the Police Department. So she had done some off-site training last week and is now working with Chief Kachajin and Officer Kelleher on some field training here in Brandon. I think.
Just clarify, how many hours a week is Officer Fontana?
So she's actually, she has a level two certification, which it doesn't limit how many hours she can work. It limits, like, there's a small class, I would say small, class of serious crimes that she cannot investigate alone or handle alone. So I believe she expressed at the time when Bill and I met with her and Chief Kachajin that she could be available 40 hours a week.
Awesome.
Yep. And I believe, oh wait. I don't even have it. I did an update for you that I didn't bring in.
Yes.
Pretty big.
We got a grant for $29,000 for the hydrologically connected highway segments. I remember that was part of the report. Oh, there were a few odds and ends. I think during a quiet moment in the meeting, I might try and look that up and just give you a couple of those highlights. I apologize for not having that with me.
Questions of town manager from the select board?
One thing, Mr. Hopkins, not to belabor sidewalks, this is Jeff Halen speaking. Just, it's been talked about publicly a bit with the Union Street project and wanted to give you an opportunity to give us a report on, or an update on that.
So everybody's disappointed at the complexity of the project. Bill is, Bill's getting ready to talk. I'll let, Bill's been hands-on with this and Bill has more up-to-date information, I guess, to give you.
So we're currently at a currently at a point right now where we need to go out for acquiring temporary right-of-way easements from the property owners on, you know, along the project. And that's the point we're at right now. We started outreach today. This is again a part of a very long process when applying for this transportation alternative program. It's the reason, I think, why segment six took as long as it did. Like, I mean, we started with right-of-way acquisition on segment six, five years before we ended the ground. This is much shorter. Anticipate that we should be able to have that done by the end of the summer, assuming everybody wants to donate their temporary easement to allow us to do on the stormwater work as well as the sidewalk work.
And I'd like, just to take this opportunity to say, I love me some front porch forum. I find it really entertaining sometimes. It's a great place to find free stuff. But if a member of the public has a question about whether the town is buying property or whether, how a certain project is going and why something may be held up or not, the best place to start is the town. Call Seth, call Bill, call a member of the select board or email us. All our emails are on the town website. We probably have better information than your next door neighbor. Just that.
Thank you. So if I could, could I give you my update?
Yes, please.
I have located it here. So I mentioned the grant, that was something you applied to prove. I have located it here. So I mentioned the grant. That was something you applied to, you approved applying for at your May thirteenth meeting. This will help us do stormwater management up to standard in all of the corners of the town. We also got the Spring two thousand twenty-five groundwater quality monitoring report for the landfill. I've posted that to the town website. Conditions in general there appear to be within reasonable expectations based on the previous results, and the only recommendation is to continue monitoring in compliance with our certification requirement. So they'll do that twice a year. They also inspected the landfill itself, not just the groundwater, in a different inspection. And the cover drainage systems and gas control systems are all in overall good condition and continuing current practices for maintenance is appropriate. I posted that on the town website as well. Bill completed a triennial open space inventory monitoring report for Vermont Emergency Management. This required a lot of photographic documentation of the seven house sites, which were successful buyout properties in the floodplain on Newton Road and Wheeler Road. The community should be gratified that these families have relocated out of harm's way and the floodplain has been restored to mitigate future hazards to other properties. Bill is currently organizing the demolition of the buyout property at three seventeen North Street, adjacent to the North Street Bridge, and he has another Newton Road property in the process. Jeff Halen as Emergency Management Coordinator and I, as Emergency Management Director, represented Brandon in the Rutland Regional Emergency Management Session by remote attendance this past Wednesday. And I plan to attend the mini tabletop exercise at the Chittenden Grange in person this coming Wednesday. I mentioned Officer Fontana. Oh, right. She hopes to attend a Select Board meeting in July for introductions. And as far as the budget, so after my report, you do get that little budget summary by department. It does appear that we will end with a very modest surplus. I just want to caution that these numbers are going to change. Additional bills always come in during the month of July for goods and services purchased before the end of June, and we're required to book it to the previous year. So right now, it looks like sixty-nine thousand dollars to the good, so to speak. We're gonna call on a chunk of that to take care of the upfitting of the cruiser, I believe. So the the current plan with the cruiser is you've already bought the cruiser, the replacement cruiser, and the upfitting piece, they may be billing us for that close enough to the end of the fiscal year that we just counted against last year. That was, I think, the board's intention was to use the the amount that was available in the Police Department budget for this year.
Questions of the Town Manager by the Board? Questions of the Town Manager by the public? Town Manager's Report is accepted. Community Development Report, Bill Moore.
This is Bill Moore. I forgot to do that last time. This is my Community Development Report for today, the twenty-third. Two thousand twenty-five is the year of the swimming lesson. Nifty Thrifty reached out offering to help underwrite the cost of half the registration fees for swimming lessons. Upon announcing this community gift, Bob Foley of Foley Brothers Brewery offered to match the sponsorship, making all swim lessons free for Brandon children in two thousand twenty-five. That's definitely the big thank you to Nifty Thrifty and to Bob Foley of Foley Brothers. They both felt that the safety and confidence that being able to swim provides to people is so very important. There's still some openings in the July and August sessions. Jake Jacobs and Sue Danforth look forward to seeing you at the Brandon Inn Pool. Working with our pickleball ambassador, Bernie Carr, we've instituted a new fee-based experience. Starting on July first, six-month paid registrations will be required to play during the Otter Valley North Campus Indoor Gymnasium Space for the twenty-plus hours a week of weekly times that they have it available. The fifty dollars for a resident, seventy-nine dollar non-resident fees collected will be used to support pickleball activities in the community. Coach Tammy will provide an accessible-to-all unified cheer experience. Starting on August the fifth and running through the fall, athletes entering grades three through eight will meet every Tuesday from five-thirty to six-thirty through mid-October to work on cheering basics such as motions, jumps, and cheers, as well as the social emotional skills needed to compete on a team. And that is my report. And again, I do want to talk about three-one-seven North Street, just in case you saw the gaggle of trucks and people that were on North Street from ten to ten-thirty doing the pre-bid, pre-bid mandatory visit.
Questions or comments from the Board for Mr. Moore? I would like to say thank you for the fee structure for the pickleball. I like that. And I would like to say, also echoing what Cecil had said regarding Front Page Forum, I wanted to clarify the former Boys Club and Girls Club down there that was never run by the town of Brandon. As I have kind of picked up the vein on Front Page Forum, it was a, the Boys Club out of Rutland was running it, renting it from the owners. And when they decided to not do it anymore and leave town, it's been empty ever since then. And as much as I agree with people stating it would make a marvelous laundromat, the town does not do businesses like that. That would be for a private sector person to come in and do a business plan and make sure it cash flows to have a laundromat. It would be a great location for them. That's all I would like to say. Anyone else have anything to say?
Vicki's raised her hand on Zoom. Vicki?
Need to unmute her?
She should be allowed to mute or something.
Sorry about that. It's my understanding that the Brandon Forstale House Representative, Todd Nielsen, is actively seeking funding to purchase the building and turn it into a laundromat.
That would be marvelous.
I think so, too.
We need one, and I just wanted to clarify that that's not an endeavor that the town does. Well, thank you for that information. Anything else on the Bill Moore's report? Yes.
Hi, Karen Rhodes. I was talking on the Front Porch Forum when I saw that people wanted to put another community center gathering place down there. And I said, I think that's a little bit odd when we don't even have a laundromat. And one man, whose name I won't say, got really, really irate and said, not, pretty much not in my backyard. It'll increase the traffic where I live. And I'm thinking, what about the entire population that uses a laundromat? That has to travel seventeen to twenty, over twenty miles to do their laundry? And I find that kind of attitude, you might, Mr. Nielsen might get some pushback by some of the residents because of traffic. You live in a downtown area. I lived on Rossiter Street and rented for ten years when Blue Seal was at its hiatus. And that place was actually a warehouse, and there were trains uncoupling. It was, you know, there was noisy. There was a lot of traffic. So I don't, I don't know. I just get disheartened when I see people thinking that what they want is exactly what they're gonna get and not think about the bigger picture of the people who have to travel and the families that don't have washers and don't have dryers and don't have the ability when they rent or own to have a machine in their homes. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to to have to say this, but I think there's quite a lot of narrow-minded people that need to be enlightened that this just isn't a town just to sit and retire. This is a working town. There's families here, and the families have needs that also need to be met, even if you don't want it in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Moore? None heard. Moving on. Now we're at public comment and participation earlier in our agenda than usual.
Shouldn't we have one of your bits?
Thanks. My agenda has public comments next. Somebody give me a bad agenda?
Mine does.
Mine does.
Yours is what?
Public comment.
Public comments.
We do.
Okay, so this is.
Be, yeah.
Even on this one, it is. Yeah, it's what it's on the original.
Item six is public comment for items not on the agenda. Anyone in the public like to say anything?
Vicki has her hand up.
Vicki has her hand up. Go for Vicki.
Thank you. My comment is actually an item on the agenda, but it's next, so I feel like now's a good time to ask. I see that the, there's reappointments being made this evening, and I'm just looking for some clarification. I didn't see any of those positions posted anywhere as being vacant for other people who might be interested to apply for them.
Okay. Mr. Hopkins, you'd like to respond or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Seth Hopkins. So I did, I read that question that was submitted to Front Porch Forum or that or that comment, and I appreciated it. I took the question to the Town Office staff and without having any judgment on my part, I, the Town Office staff confirms that it's been the town's practice of many years, standing to foster continuity in boards by generally reappointing incumbents when they are interested and when the board in question is functioning well. So you're correct, these weren't posted in the usual manner. They weren't considered to be vacancies. They were considered to be renewals that the town's practice has been to continue people in the same position. If the Select Board would like to change that, that is absolutely up to the Select Board. I don't think that it was any kind of executive decision made by the town's staff or by the Select Board, frankly. I think it's just kind of been past practice was continued.
And I would also note that there is an opening on the Energy Committee, and there is also an opening for an alternate on the Development Review Board.
Well, my, my point being that if there's people who do want to do their civic duty and volunteer, that we basically, in some cases, might have to wait for these people to die off before there's an opening.
Well, I believe that the, I know all the years I've been involved, if there's somebody that's in the position that is doing the job and knows the job, they've been given the opportunity to remain by Elaine sending out an email to them and asking them if they want to remain and and work for the town. So again, what Seth says showed of us changing the policy on that, that would continue, but noting that there are a couple of opposition.
I would also note that over the last three years, there has been some significant flux on all those boards with members resigning and appointments being made. So I don't think it's a matter of having to wait for some people to die off. It just may seem that way.
Well, and also I feel that some people have had the opportunity to serve on multiple boards. While some of us have applied multiple times and, you know, it just seems like it's a big town and only a few people are participating in its governance consistently. I would ask you to revisit the policy to post them. If people don't apply, then why not reappoint? But if someone else reapplies, I feel like it would be worthy of the time to interview them for diversity.
Okay, we will take that point under advisement. Other public comment? None heard. Moving on. Appointments? The list of appointments in the packet?
You want to do a consent?
Consent agenda.
For all of them?
Unless somebody has a reason not to.
Brian Coolidge, I'll make a motion for a consent agenda and approve all the following for the appointments.
Do we have a second?
Ralph Heath here, second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion on these? None heard. All in favor of naming these as the appointments for the terms as stated? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fosed? No one. Record shows unanimous. Award, paving bid for the Town Farm Road resurfacing.
Chair, this is Seth Hopkins. So the bid opening results are in the meeting packet. There is a difference of only one hundred dollars and fifty cents between the low bid, which was Wilk, and the next lowest bid, which was Pike. Both have done good work in Brandon. Pike did last year's project. We go out to bid to try to get the taxpayers the best value for money and a competitive bid process in which the bidders are this close in price. And the low bid among qualified bidders is awarded will tend to keep the bidder's pencils sharp and keep Brandon work at attractive rates. I recommend you award the bid to the low bidder, Wilk Paving. Pike knows that it was a close call, and I expect that they will be back to bid on Brandon work in the future.
Brian Coolidge, make a motion to approve Wilk Paving.
Cecil Renish Smith, I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any additional conversation? Two very competitive bids. All in favor of going with Wilk Paving? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fosed? No one. The difference is a hundred dollars between those bids. That's pretty good.
And that difference of a hundred dollars and fifty cents was on a winning bid of one hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. This, this was really quite close. Their per ton cost was six, six cents different.
I actually always feel really relieved as one, but also it's affirming when we get multiple bids that are that close because it means that, like, wildly divergent.
Item nine, selecting our fuel supplier and pricing plans. Mr. Hopkins?
Mr. Chair, this is Seth Hopkins. There's a member, there's a memo in your meeting packet. The current suppliers have been the low bidders for the last two or more years. They provided us quotes for fiscal year twenty-six, which are lower than fiscal year twenty-five pricing in every case. Fuel is a volatile commodity, as we all know. Locking in as best we can is the best we can do for the taxpayers. So the quotes are from Champlain Valley Fuels for on-road diesel, thirty-five cents over their rack price. So in two thousand twenty-five, we paid two dollars seventy-three cents a gallon, and their quote for next year is two dollars fifty-nine cents and some fractions for fuel oil. Also Champlain Valley, the quote is for thirty-five cents over their rack price, and they are offering that price capped at two fifty-five per gallon, which I would recommend the Select Board choose. This year, we're paying two dollars and eighty-seven cents a gallon. You chose the fixed price last year, so again, this is a, this is a savings. And then for propane, this is the first time we've been offered the state pricing on propane. Our propane usage has gone up relative to our fuel oil usage, which has gone down through the conversion of several buildings, including this one. Actually, we, we converted the Town Hall Boiler, if you remember, when the chimney got knocked off and so forth. So this year, we have been paying one fifty-three. They'll lock us in at a flat one sixty-nine nine or the state contract price. And as of the date that this was written up, which was a few days ago, that was one forty-eight nine. So I think that the state price might be the smart one to go with there to benefit from that volume that the state gets benefit from.
Pleasure of the Board.
This is Cecil Renish Smith. I move that we agree to purchase our fiscal year two thousand twenty-six fuel from Champlain Valley Fuels for on-road diesel at thirty-five cents over rack rate. Champlain Valley Fuels for number two heating oil at thirty-four, thirty-five cents over rack rate capped at two dollars and fifty-five cents a gallon. And suburban propane for pro-
And Suburban Propane for propane at the state of Vermont contract pricing, which is $0.45 over rack, is that correct?
Yes.
Brian Coolidge, I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any additional conversation? None heard, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Feeling fuel prices might be going up?
They already are, yeah.
That is the end of the agenda, except for executive session. I move that we will go into recess for five or ten minutes. We are out of recess and talking about executive session, motion, please.
I move that we enter executive session pursuant to one VSA Section 313 Sub A Sub 3 reevaluation of a public officer or employee for purpose of the Town Manager's annual review.
Second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
8:18, coming out of executive session for the motion?
I move that we exit executive session with no action taken.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one? Motion was made by Cecil, seconded by?
Brian Coolidge.
Brian Coolidge.
Now, Brian Coolidge is going to motion to adjourn.
Now Ralph Heath here will second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.